Okay, we're all here then.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, I will go ahead and call the role, Commissioner, Committee Order first of all, and then I will call the role, Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Soltes.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
You're muted.
Here. Hear me now?
And Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Okay, and Commissioner Brown is excused tonight.
Correct.
He is on the East Coast.
Thank you, Angel.
First, next item is the approval of any additions or corrections. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I saw move the minutes be approved as written.
Okay, I heard, I think that was Commissioner Bradbury, move to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second them.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Jordan did.
All those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
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 Okay, most of the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the public comment for non-adjunctive, and I will go ahead and read the public comment rules and decorum. The chair, in-person comments shall be made, first giving the speaker's name and address. When there are 30 seconds remaining, staff will
Commissioner Krasik, I think we're having a delay if your, your system, maybe if you turn your camera off, it will speed up the connection.
Okay. Is that any better?
So far.
Okay. Public comment may be made remotely via Zoom or by phone during designated portions of the meeting. To speak during the meeting, press the raise hand button. Please refrain from raising your hand until the chair has announced the commission has opened the public comments period of the meeting. Your name or the last three digits of your phone number will be called out when it is your turn to speak. Mute from your phone to call in. You may need to press star six to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific commissioner. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage or discuss or comment on personalities, indulge in derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any commissioner, the chair, or any member of the staff or the public. There will be no demonstrations during or at the conclusion of any public comment. These guidelines are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public meeting to give every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no so with that, are there any citizens who wish to comment on any item that is not on the agenda? Michelle, do we have anyone here that
We have
Desires to comment?
Nobody is raising their hand. Give them a second to push star nine if they're on their phone and/or raise their hand button. We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like we have anyone wishes to comment on a non-public comment and decorum rules that I just stated will also apply to the public hearing that we will be holding later in the meeting. So with that, we have the agenda items for formal review, which is the comprehensive plan amendment, and which of the staff members is going to be speaking to that?
That would be me, Commissioner, Robin Bolster Grant. Alrighty, so I'll be starting and then I will switch over to the other senior planner. Again, Robin Bolster Grant, senior planner, Roxanne Robles will be also presenting some of these items as well. So, good afternoon. Following the two study sessions held before your commission, we are returning to seek a recommendation on the 2022 docket of comprehensive plan amendments. In your packet is our staff report articulating the findings that are required for approving comprehensive plan amendments, as well as the text amendments. Excuse me, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. There, everybody see that? I was still, still fumbling around with Zoom these days, I'm afraid. So, this is familiar for most folks, but we'll go through the 2022 docket, four items were approved by the city council in February of this year, with one item number two taken off the list pending further discussion and possible language changes. So I will lead off with the first proposed amendment, and that is to chapters 11 and 13 that incorporate the 2022 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, or PROS Plan. As we have discussed, the 2022 PROS Plan was adopted by the city council also in February of this year after extensive public outreach and in partnership with the Parks Commission. The PROS Plan was not consistent with the two elements of the comp plan and the proposed amendments before, before you simply reconcile those inconsistencies with the PROS Plan. The inconsistencies again were a new parks classification system, updated inventory, restated goals and policies. I spoke at our previous study session about a potential change in the level of service. However, the 2022 PROS Plan did not formally adopt that change, so no amendment to that language is needed at this time. The proposed changes here again, text amendments to both chapter 11, Parks Recreation Open Space Element, and chapter 13, the Capital Facilities Element, which are included in your packet. None of the changes fall outside of the adopted PROS Plan. So, chapter 19.09 of Gig Harbor Municipal Code establishes the process for approval of any amendments to the comprehensive plan, and the criteria for approval are laid out here, and our responses again are included in the staff report. I can go through them, but I'm sure, I hate reading off of PowerPoints, but consistency with the goals of the comp plan, consistency with the Growth Management Act, of the other policies that we are required to be consistent with multi-county, countywide, and state and local laws, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the city's ability to provide facilities, sewer and water, transportation, and the proposed amendment advances the public interest. For text amendments that propose to increase density or intensity of development, additional criteria apply that is not in play with these amendments. They do not impact density or intensity of development. And we talked about this again, the changes reflect the plan adopted by the city council, do not increase, as I said, density or intensity of development, and do not include amendments to any land use plans. Next steps include obtaining a recommendation from your commission. We will be issuing CIPA determination of nonsignificance, as this is a non-project action. We will be holding a study session before the city council next week on the 27th, followed by a tentative first reading of the amendments on November 14th and a second reading on the 28th. These dates are subject to change, of course, if any issues arise, or if any changes to our proposed amendments are required. Finally, it is our intent to incorporate the 2022 PROS Plan into the comp plan in its entirety as part of the 2024 periodic update. The reason we were not able to do that with this action has to do with the Capital Improvements Plan, or CIP, until the budget has been finalized, we can't reconcile the previous CIP and the figures in that with the proposed budget that was included in the 2022 PROS Plan. So we will roll all that in, hopefully we will have one parks plan and not two, two separate plans, which can be confusing. That is all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So, great presentation, thank you very much, Robin. Can you, I believe you told us last time, and I think you just reiterated when you opened up, that the commit, or, excuse me, the city council has already adopted the PROS Plan. So can you, can you, that seems confusing to me, can you remind us what happened there?
So the adoption was done by resolution, it was not an ordinance change, which is why it did not come before the planning commission first. And again, it followed extensive outreach, the consultant that was hired, prepared and held meetings and sent mailers and all of that, but yeah, it was, it was adopted by resolution and not by ordinance.
And so next, so like, I'm just trying to understand, is that the way it has to be? Kind of like double adoption, if you will, or would it have, next time would you do it differently? And I know you didn't personally manage this.
No, I did not, so when we roll it into, but I, but I've heard some things. When we, when we roll it in, again, this is our proposal is to incorporate it into the actual comprehensive plan, and that action, legislative action like this will come before your commission, before it gets voted on by the city council.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions of staff?
Just a procedural question, Commissioner. Will we address each of these amendments one by one? Are we going to be looking for a unified comprehensive recommendation at the end of the three presentations?
Is that, sorry, is that directed to me or to the chair?
Actually, to you, Robin, please.
Okay, we have presented this as, as one action, because none of these, you know, if we, if we were looking at a development, like a project that sometimes involves a comp plan amendment, that would be broken out, but because these are non-project, city-sponsored amendments, we rolled them into one, that does not mean that you have to, I mean, you, you can, you can act on all or part. It's, it's our preference that, that the, that the packet be, achieve your recommendation one way or the other. But if there are questions, you know, we can, we can certainly, we can certainly discuss that, but, but it made sense to have this be one item. I don't know if that helped. If, there's nothing else
Any more questions of staff?
Go ahead, please. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chair.
Okay, then if there's no more questions, are are you going to take the next item, the Stormwater Management Plan, or is Roxanne going to do it?
I will turn it over to my colleague, Roxanne will take us through the other two items.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, so I'm gonna actually start with the Climate Action Plan, since there's a little less to go over there. But hopefully some of this looks pretty familiar. So, we are adopting an amendment to incorporate climate change into the comprehensive plan this year. Just a refresher on what we did, we convened the CCC PAC and got a lot of recommendations and feedback from them, and distilled those into kind of the most frequently repeated priorities, and then developed those into one goal and four policies that we reviewed last week. And so based on your comments, or no, was it two weeks ago, I guess? Anyways, so I revised some of the language based on what you all had said. So I underlined some of the things that I didn't do a full strike through and underline, that would have been pretty messy. I just kind of highlighted here with underline what it is that I changed. So added equity and social justice to the overall goal. Greenhouse gas emissions, removed the bit about emissions originating in the city, since I think we kind of clarified that. Revised Policy 552 to say diversified energy sources and renewable energy sources, rather than being specific about electrification. Tweaked 553 a little bit to make sure that that is focused on all planning processes within the city, and then made 554 more about regional collaboration. I'm happy to take any questions or comments on this. Hopefully it reflects the discussion we last had.
Okay, questions of Roxanne?
I just
No questions.
I'll just mention, it's more of a comment, thank you, this looks great, and thank you for taking our, our feedback from the last round.
Okay. I'm not hearing any other comments or questions, so I'll keep moving.
Roxanne?
Yes.
Okay, Roxanne, I do have a question. I noticed when I was going through the background information this afternoon, that there was a comment there regarding preservation, doing more to preserve trees. And obviously, that's not part of what we're talking about here, but I'm a little bit worried that maybe we're, we're gonna be too late on that.
Well, great news, we already have a consultant working on
I was looking at a development that's going in on Edwards Drive, and it looks like that was a total clear
Which development?
It's, it's the one on Edwards Drive.
Oh, I'm, I'm not familiar, but
Right behind the Catholic Church there.
Okay, we do have an urban forestry management plan in the works, we have our on-call arborist, Davy Resource Group, we've contracted them to do a more holistic review of our operations and code to make sure that we are preserving trees, and that we maybe get, get some more teeth to our code for when people chop down trees without permits, or an arborist report. So while it might not affect this Edwards Avenue development specifically, we are going to have a lot more research and planning around our urban forests very, very soon.
What is the city's standards now with regard to development, and how many trees a developer has to leave in place?
It's 25% of significant trees on a parcel, and then all of the viable significant trees within the landscape buffer of 25% of 25 feet. I don't want to derail this into an urban forestry discussion, since that can really go really deep. I'm happy to share the, the tree, our landscaping code with you, and kind of walk you through it, and also what we have from our urban forestry consultant to this point.
Okay, I don't think we want to do that tonight, because we've got a lot of other things on the agenda, but if you could email me some information on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure thing.
And I want to turn it now to Commissioner Jordan, who has his hand up.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner, good, good call on the trees. I, I agree, Roxanne, I don't want to go too far down that path, but when I read 55 and I see natural systems, to me that includes trees, and this is high level and could tie back easily to trees. So I think you're kind of, I think you're covered personally.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, yeah, good, good things to think about, and we are thinking about trees. It's what makes Gig Harbor beautiful and special. Okay, so I am going to move on to Stormwater Management Action Plan. As a reminder, it's a state requirement that the city needs as a entity with a stormwater system to discharge into waters of the state, so Gig Harbor Bay, Hood Canal, et cetera. We had some comments on table two, and I wanted to let everyone know that the confusion we had around these calculations was mainly due to confusing headings. So, the, all of the numbers are correct, I double-checked this with our GIS coordinator, and he let me know, he looked into all of these, the basin sizes, the basin acres, and went and double-checked his data, and it's all correct, so we are making informed decisions with the right data. I think what was confusing is that originally this watershed size said something like total basin acres, and so we're letting folks know that that is not the entire area that we are considering. We're considering the basin acres within our city UGA and the city limits. So this calculation, the percentage on the far right, is basin acres within city limits divided by the basin acres within the city and the UGA. So you can see that these numbers are a lot smaller than the watershed size, and so the calculations for percentage make a lot more sense. Any questions about table two?
Roxanne, just because Commissioner Brown is not here, let me just make sure that I really understand this completely. The watershed size is a data point, but the calculations, if I understand you correctly, are based on the basin acres and city UGA, kind of divided by the basin acres within city limits, hence that 74% is in with, within the city limits.
Yes.
Total basin acres.
Yes, that's right, that's, that's a good way to describe it, watershed size is kind of, it's a data point, but it isn't factored into that calculation. Commissioner Snodgrass?
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying those numbers for us.
Yeah, sure thing. I didn't, I got scared that we were, you know, using bad data, but I trust our former stormwater tech breed to do the right thing, so. And also, we would like to introduce a, we have exhibit C is the SMAP draft. That draft that was presented with your packet is incorrect, and so there is an updated draft that we would like to present for the commission tonight. So it has this updated table, and then this table that Commissioner Jordan had comments on. I received dates from the Public Works Director, like, a few, just a few days before this meeting, so I was able to get some projected start dates for, for these projects that are in table five. And of course, these are long-range, so kind of long-range projects, and they're not budgeted, which kind of puts them into that long-term action bucket, so that's why there are such big ranges on some of these. Any questions on table five?
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any questions, Roxanne, why don't you proceed then?
Okay, well, again, you can contact me, mobile is best if you want to use phone, but I'm happy to answer any questions offline. Any further questions, excuse me?
Okay, thank you, Roxanne. I think at this point in time, then, and if there's no further questions from the commissions, commissioners, it's probably time to go ahead. And Michelle, is it necessary for me to read the statement again, or was the first time sufficient?
Oh, the first time was sufficient.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public meeting, and we have then the staff official staff report, is there anything else from the staff that you wish to present at this time?
The, I just want to make sure that we present the, the SMAP draft four that should be in the folder with all of the other exhibits.
Okay, is that something you can put up on the screen?
Robin, is that appropriate at this time? Robin, you're muted.
Um, I don't, I don't see any, any problem with that, it's, but how, yeah. Are you putting up just the changed, just the, the revision?
Well, I already showed those, so I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything.
No, procedurally, no, no.
Great, thank you, Robin. Then no, I do not have anything further.
That was draft version
Then at this time, it's appropriate for members of the public to
Is that the one that was updated?
I added draft version four in the, in the folder for today.
That wasn't, that, that's, it's not in the planning commission folder, I'm not sure which folder you have it in.
Oh. Okay, I will move it. Thank you.
But just to clarify, we're just talking about the tables, is that? Okay, all right, there are no other changes, just the updated revised tables, okay, thank you.
Okay. Robin, then, is it appropriate to start taking comments from the public if we have any
Sure.
Members of the public that wish to address us tonight? Okay, so we'll go ahead and take comments from the public. Michelle, do we have any members of the public who wish to comment?
I do not see any hands up.
Okay. If there's any members of the public that wish to comment, please raise your hand at this time. The, use the raise hand comment at the bottom of the screen. Okay, then, apparently we do not have anyone who wishes to comment, so I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to discussion. So this is for members of the Planning Commission who want to have any further discussion with regard to the three items that are under consideration tonight. We are a quiet group tonight.
Well, since you want to comment, John. I really appreciate the work that the staff has done on these amendments, I think
Go ahead, Commissioner Soltes. Go ahead, Commissioner Saltis.
Commissioner Saltis, you're muted.
Bob, you're muted. Michelle, can you unmute him? Here he is.
All right, just anyway, I want to appreciate, thank the staff for their work on this. It's a good, I think it's a good practice for us as commissioners to begin to prepare for the 2024 update, which is going to be a lot more of this and maybe a lot more difficult, but at least the, I like the staff memo particularly because it kind of laid out the criteria that needed to be followed. And I would presume that we'll have to do that for every modification to the comp plan coming up over the next couple of years. So yeah, good work. Glad you guys got the fixes in that were talked about last week. And special kudos to Roxanne. I think she's got a pretty solid climate action plan. Thank you very much. So it's, it's all coming together and I'll, I'll look forward to voicing my approval when we get a chance to put this forward to the council. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Jason, Commissioner Jordan?
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Saltis said it well. I really nicely done. I do have a question. I'm not sure if this question is for Michelle or others, but the public have access to the documents? You've created a commission folder for us, which is great, but can the public access those documents too? I'm just curious how that works.
All of the documents, so when I send them out to you guys, they're all updated and uploaded to the calendar or to the planning commission section of the city's website. So all, all documents are public and available at any time and citizens can also come into the community development department and we can provide them with copies if they want hard copies. But they are, when they go to you, they're posted to the public as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on these items before? For us. Okay, Robin, what is, what is the next step in this? Are we to take action on this tonight or will that come back to us at a later meeting?
This is the time to vote on your recommendation.
Okay. How do, how do you, how do the commissioners want to proceed? Do you want to should we take each of the items individually or should we take them all as a group? So Roxanne, what would be the the appropriate motion if we wish to go ahead and approve this? I'm sorry, Robin, what would be the appropriate motion?
That's okay. The, the best and easiest way would be to make a recommendation on the 2022 docket as a whole. That's the simplest, most straightforward, and that's how we will be presenting to city council.
Commissioner
Chair
I'm sorry, for, I, I was wondering if staff
No, no problem.
Show the slide with everything that, that we're voting on. I reckon we do it in one most, one, one vote. But can we see that slide again that has it, we're voting on?
Sure, give me a sec here, please, sir. Too many things up, okay. Sorry, happy fingers, okay. Is that, does that help? So
Yes, it does. That, that gives us the basis for our motion then.
Okay, so number one, revisions to park recreation, open space element, portions of the capital facilities element. And number three, amending to include the language regarding climate change and sustainability. And number four, adding the stormwater management action plan as an appendix. Those, those are the items.
Okay, so we would be making then the motion would exclude the item number two.
Thank you, yes, that, that would help to clarify, please.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready for a motion now. Does somebody want to make a motion to forward this to the city council excluding item number two?
I move that we forward the 2022 docket barring item number two to the city council. Wait, what did I just say?
Okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Snodgrass?
To approve the docket with the exception of item number two and move it forward to, yes.
Yeah, I believe that's the correct motion. Is there a second to Commissioner Snodgrass's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan seconds. All right, any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, please unmute yourselves. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, is there anyone opposed? I have the chair votes aye as well. Okay, the motion carries unanimously, so it's to be forwarded to the city council. Thank you very much. Other business? Next meeting, Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to raise at this time? Anything from the staff?
Just, I just wanted to say on the, the November 3rd, we are hoping that Puget Sound Regional Council, PSRC, will be making a presentation. We hope it's not, not in ink yet, but they will be talking about all the things that they deal with, transportation, growth management, economic development as they pertain to the 2024 comprehensive plan update. And then on the 17th, we will be for sure presenting or having Commerce, the Department of Commerce, make a presentation also regarding the, the comprehensive plan update. And we will be rolling out a lot more material about that very soon, including our website and, and other, other fun stuff to get folks thinking about that update process. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, I have one question. Can I bring up any issue, John?
Absolutely.
It's just a, it's a question for staff and for the commission. I was pretty impressed by the fact that we had an advisory committee for the climate change comprehensive plan that was broad and pretty deep and, and I think provided a lot of good input to this comprehensive plan change. I don't know exactly what the future plans for that committee are at the moment, but it would seem to me that a climate action plan would profit as well from having a group of citizens work with the consultants to, you know, provide some sort of the community focus for a climate action plan. I wasn't sure if Roxanne or Robin had been talking about this next step and citizen involvement in it, but I, I thought I'd throw it on the table and see if the commissioners thought that was a good idea to weigh in on as well.
Roxanne, Robin, what's
Well
What's the future plans for that committee? Will that be continuing, a new committee formed?
Rox, Roxy would know more about the, that specific committee. I can tell you for the update, there's going to be extensive community participation, input workshops. We are hopefully getting close to selecting a consultant to work with us and they will be putting together a public engagement plan for all of the changes, but Roxanne can speak to the, the climate group specifically if you know.
Yeah, so I think that we do want to have the CCC pack onboard as we develop the climate action plan. We're actually interviewing two consultants on Monday and I plan to ask them about, you know, how they would use a group of, or committee of that nature, just to see, to make sure it can be like an effective and important part of their work. But yeah, I don't think, I think the CCC pack will rise again. I think it's a really cool group of people, so. Yeah, we'll not will not, all that work was not in vain.
Roxanne, this is Jason. Didn't you get a, when, when you formed that committee, I recall, I think I recall you had a grant? Two, was, did the grant fund the committee or am I mixing up?
The grant is to, is from the Department of Commerce. It's called the Early Planning Climate Action Grant. And it, it reimburses the city for staff time developing things like this, climate change amendment. And we're going to use part of that grant to pay for a climate consultant.
That's, thank you for that. That's kind of what I recalled. And so I just, for my commissioners, my fellow commissioners, just wanted to make sure you all had visibility that there was some grant funding behind that too. And, and, you know, Roxanne really managed that really well, but there, there are costs associated with, with that.
All right, anything else on the, on that subject? Okay, hearing none? Any, any additional business beyond those issues? Okay, if not, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. There's a second?
Second?
All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much and have a good evening. Michelle, could you stay on for just about two minutes? I've got a, a couple of technical issues I need to discuss with, with you.
Okay. Good night, take care, everybody.
Bye, everybody.